Call the Blackhawk County Board of Supervisors meeting for November fourteenth, two thousand seventeen to order. Roll call, Mr. Veder.
Layland.
Here.
Little.
Here.
Schwartz.
Here.
White.
Here.
Eggsman.
Here. Take a moment of silence, reflect on actions. Please join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
First item is the agenda received as proposed or amended. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried. Now it's time for public comments. Anyone wishing to address the board on any item that is not on the agenda, please do so. Seeing none, move on to claims and payments. First item is the approval of the expenditures for Blackhawk County.
The county's expenditures this week total one million, one hundred and sixteen thousand, nine hundred and fifty dollars and sixteen cents. That's one, 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 six, nine, five, zero, point, one, six. That includes secondary roads payment on three motor graders of eight hundred and seventy-three thousand.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any questions on this? Hearing none, please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Eggsman.
Yes. Item B is resolution to Board of Supervisors approve the expenditures for Country View facility.
Country View's expenditures this week total sixty-eight thousand, two hundred and fifty-eight dollars and twenty-two cents, six, eight, two, five, eight, point, two, two.
Motion approved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing on this resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Eggsman.
Yes. Item four is receive project updates from department heads elected officials.
Morning, Kathy.
Morning.
Good morning.
Morning.
Kathy Nicholas, county engineer. Roads are in good condition this morning. In other news, I did attend a city council meeting last evening with the city of Janesville, and they did sign the agreement to participate in the resurfacing of Waverly Road. There are shared portion with them, and that work will take place next summer. We'll probably get that agreement back from them in a week or so, and then we'll place it on the agenda as soon as we receive it. I have heard from several property owners on Wyden Road just north of Washburn Road, so these are residents who live on the portion of Wyden Road that we've been, that I've been considering vacating. They are, they were interested in the update. What's the status of that, that process, since I did send them all letters back in September? I would like to bring that back to the board to proceed with some type of vacation on that, and whether that's through another work session before we begin the formal process, I can discuss that with each of you. And then lastly, we are continuing to work on the Cedar River Bridge replacement project over the Cedar River on Cedar Wapsie Road. Our structural design consultant, we have been working with them to, so that they can submit information for our wetlands permitting. That process, we are beginning that now, and I will keep you informed, I'll keep you informed as we progress towards getting that project ready for construction. Can I answer any questions at this time?
Why don't you just go ahead and put that, this will be the third time, and I don't think we need any more work sessions. The board's turned it down twice, but if you want to insist, you can put it on there, and we'll take another look at it for the third time. I've got two phone calls also on my machine that I'll pass on that are in favor of keeping it the way it is. So, put it on the agenda, and we'll do it for a third time.
Have, have we voted on it before? You mean, when you're saying that?
Two different times.
It's, when we-
Some time ago.
I was going to say it's-
Yeah, it's, it's been on the agenda now. Is this a public hearing?
That's what it would, would be, yes. That's what the Code of Iowa-
You know, it's not a huge cause, but this is the third time we're going to incur the cause for a public hearing, because it has to be published and incurred here and so forth, but if you want to push it, put it on the agenda.
Well, was that what you were considering, thinking if a work session would help give us more information, or?
We got all the information.
How much more do you really need? I mean, we've talked about it and talked about it.
We, I have more photos from two thousand and eight that do show the extensive flooding on Wyden Road. We've never really had many of those. We, in, in my office, we haven't had many of those photos, because we haven't, because it's been enclosed, a low priority road, so we haven't, we hadn't taken the time to take photos of that area during the flooding. So, several of these residents have emailed me many photos of that area.
I guess some would be, you know, Supervisor Schwartz has not had much input onto this, whether he would like a work session, or whether we want to put it on-
Well, I'd say, I mean, if we're going to do without a work session, maybe we don't waive the, the three readings, we, you know, and just to give folks time so we, so we're sure that we've heard from everybody out there. So if we're going to do without a work session, I say that we don't waive, spend the rule of waiving the readings.
This is not an ordinance. I, I don't think you're going to have to have three readings. I think one, one hearing and one decision will do it.
Well, then I, I prefer a work session in that case.
Is it a public hearing?
Yes, it is a public hearing, i- if you decide to go with the hearing route.
One of the concerns last time, too, was putting the gate up, liability problem. Regardless if we put it up and give it to Joe, county always has liability. They're going to go around the gate and go in the ditch anyway to get around it, but if they run into that gate, then the county's got liability, so that was one reason why we didn't want to go along with it at the time. But as long as there's opposition to it out there, I'll never support vacating it, and there is, so.
I'd still welcome the work session if there's additional pictures that we haven't seen, I guess, or any information, and, and I don't think the people have had an opportunity really to attend a meeting. I don't think we've made them aware of those sessions.
We had those people that spoke last time, we talked about it.
Yes, but that was five years ago, when you-
No, I'm talking about a few weeks ago. You had the people in there talking about the elderly lady that uses it and their son, if they were here that day.
But that was not, I hadn't told anybody about that meeting. That was just a few residents who had come and spoke at that time.
The calls I got were generated from the Courier, I believe, had an article on it, so that's where I got my calls.
Yeah. Okay, Kathy, it sounds like a scheduled work session.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Hearing none, now we move on to item five, as the minutes approved of November seventh and November ninth, two thousand seventeen. Any discussion? Hearing on all those in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Those opposed, motion carried. We have a hearing this morning in schedule nine oh five on ordinance number seven, seven, dash, one, nine, five, rezone request by Ryan and Rachel Shares. We have, item seven is the consent agenda, this by a single resolution. Any questions on any item? Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Eggsman.
Yes. Item eight, contracts and agreement. A is resolution that the land lease between Blackhawk County and Steve Young for the three-year lease agreement for county-owned vacant lot or parcel nine, zero, one, four, dash, zero, eight, dash, one, zero, one, as zero, zero, two. Be approved and direct the chair to sign for same as recommended by Dana Legdig, administrative of eighty-three.
I don't know, it may be important to add that that was a three-year period for fifty-one dollars and twenty-seven cents, and the property was ninety-nine, forty-nine Winslow Road.
Okay. Any other discussion? This is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
White.
Here.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Eggsman.
Yes. Item B is resolution that the agreement between Blackhawk County and the Iowa Homeland Security and Emergency Management Department to provide Blackhawk County federal assistance from the hazardous mitigation grant program and applicant non-federal matching funds for the two thousand sixteen flood buyout project be approved and direct chair sign for same. With this, we have one property that we have funds for. The cost to the county would be around a little over fourteen thousand dollars for this buyout.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second. Any other discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Eggsman.
Yes. Item C is resolution that the lowest reasonable bid received from Young Plumbing and Heating, Marloo, Iowa for the chiller replacement, Blackhawk County Courthouse, would a bid of five hundred and sixty-seven thousand, one hundred dollars be approved, and for the chair to sign the contract additionally on receiving the performance bond and certification of insurance as recommended by Rory Gaving, maintenance superintendent.
Good morning, Board. Rory Gaving, maintenance superintendent.
Morning, Rory.
Right.
As you're aware, we did receive two bids for this project. We have reviewed the low bid, which was received from Young's Plumbing and Heating. I did make a recommendation to go with that low bid. I also attached a letter of recommend, recommendation from our contracted engineer, Compan Engineering. The board's had a chance to look at that letter of recommendation. If there's any questions with regards to that, I'd be happy to answer. The other question that was brought up, opening of these bids, was funds to cover the overage for this project. I have spent a good deal of time working with Susan, and we have reviewed this, and I believe Susan's had a, a few communications with the board with regards to this, so Susan, if you'd like to lay that out?
I could put it up on the screen. I'm having a little trouble here with my laptop, though. But I did email that out, that schedule out to you all yesterday. Do you have any questions? Basically, we have various projects split between the two thousand fifteen geo-bond proceeds and the two thousand seventeen geo-bond proceeds. Based on our best estimations, at this time, we're going to have about four hundred and twelve thousand left over from the two thousand fifteen geo-bond. And then with this contract amount for the chiller, we will be short about one hundred and thirty-nine thousand, seven hundred in pro, in the two thousand seventeen geo-bond projects. So combined, we will have leftover proceeds of two hundred and seventy-two thousand, five hundred and sixty-eight. We had budgeted an amount in FY eighteen to transfer to the debt service for leftover proceeds from two thousand fifteen of two hundred and eighty thousand, and that's about what we're going to have left over, what we have planned at this time. So, based on our current estimations, we will have enough to cover that shortage at this point. If there are other projects that come in over budget, or, you know, that, then things will change, but.
Thank you, Susan.
Just real quick also, I'd just like to run through what the schedule's going to look like for this project. As of right now, if approved today, we are looking at doing equipment demo starting the first week of December, with a substantial completion date of the first week of March, and a final completion date of the last week of March. So come April first, we have this system up and running.
Any other questions?
I know, Rory, you were asked to look at your budget for the overage, and I think that was one of the things Susan helped you with, but as far as there were no places in your budget that this could be.
Right. As, as Susan had indicated, the majority of our capital projects that we've had were bonded projects. We did have roughly eighty thousand dollars in there for projects that actually were in my budget, and just an example of some of those projects carpeted over at Pine Crest. Let's see, I had a list here.
That's, yeah.
Yeah, we, mechanical, some mechanical repairs to our cooling towers, for an example. Our, you know, that, those are probably the biggest items, but that total was eighty-six thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars for our capital projects.
So there really wasn't any place you could take it, I guess my point, so it's-
Rory, what's the difference in the four weeks from, from March first to April first?
It gives us time to develop our punch list, so that the substantial completion is that-
March first.
Beginning of March, and then what we'll do is we'll go through and we'll, we'll do a punch list thoroughly, go through the projects, make sure everything has been covered. That allows us time to, to do that. So that, that final completion date is an estimate, but primarily this project should be finishing up right around that first week of March, and then we'll spend that month going through the project, making sure that there's no issues and everything was covered, and signed off by our engineer.
Okay, thank you, Rory.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone interested in making a motion on this?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Have a motion on the resolution? Any other discussion? Hearing none, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Eggsman.
Yes. Number nine, other business. This is discussion, possible board action. Approval of the service contract with Raps for a X-ray machine maintenance for the term of December first, two thousand seventeen, to November thirtieth, two thousand eighteen, at the amount of forty-six hundred and twenty dollars.
Morning, Board. Rory Gaving again, maintenance superintendent. This is an agreement that comes in front of us every year for our X-ray machine. A couple of things I wanted to point out. This, this machine was purchased back in two thousand and twelve for twenty-seven thousand, six hundred and ninety-one dollars. At that time, it came with a one-year warranty. After that time, two thousand thirteen, we purchased a maintenance agreement for forty-two hundred dollars. Looks like after that, we had a three percent increase, brought it to forty-three, twenty cent, forty, forty-three hundred and twenty-six dollars. Another three percent increase in two thousand and fifteen, brought it to four thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars. A three-point-seven increase in sixteen, brought it to four thousand, six hundred and twenty. Looks like we plateaued at that number. That's the number that they have quoted us now for, for the next year. Looking back at this X-ray machine, what that, what you get for that money basically is a preventative maintenance agreement. They'll come on site once a year. It is a pretty thorough inspection that they perform. They do perform a radiation inspection. There's a, there's an actual form that they have to go through to make sure, and there's, there's limitations that, you know, they have to check for to make sure that there isn't any leakage in this machine. They'll go through the computer system, they'll upgrade any software that may be needed. I did want to point out, in sixteen, we did have a UPS failure. That was covered under the service agreement. If, we did have a situation, as I had mentioned last year, about the same time when this agreement was brought in front of the board, we did have a situation where we were in between agreements, and it was a potential four thousand dollar bill just to have a technician fly here to look at the machine. Fortunately, that technician called me ahead of that trip, and we were, was able to walk me through, and it was a simple programming issue. But if that technician hadn't, you know, the county would have been on the hook for about four thousand dollars for that repair. So without an agreement, and, and a repair is needed on that, that machine, it is very expensive. It is a little painful when you're talking about a piece of equipment that's only twenty-seven thousand dollars.
This is the fifth one?
This is the fifth, mate, service agreement, yes.
When does it come to a point that it makes more sense of buying a new one? Because probably another payment, you're going to outspend what it costs for a new one.
Absolutely. As, if you recall, our previous machine, we had gotten to that point, and I believe we had that machine for about approximately eight years.
Did that have a service agreement with it for eight years?
Yes, and I, I didn't actually put those numbers together on what we ended up spending, but we had gotten to the point where the board had made a decision at that time to no longer put any more money in maintaining it, let's get a new machine. That's what we did in two thousand-
Where's that machine at now?
As far as-
The one we replaced downstairs. We sold that, or?
That was, I believe we did sell that. I believe that might have been an online auction, if I'm not mistaken.
Just curious if it's still working.
Yeah. It's, it's no longer on our, on our site, so.
Probably should be.
Rory, the certification, if we didn't have this company do it, how would we get those certifications done each year?
Last year, we reached out to another company to see if, if this is something that they could work on, and the feedback we got was this is a proprietary system, that only rapid scan. And, and at, at that point, you know, we're looking more so at the operating portion of it, the software, that was proprietary. As far as another company coming in and doing the essential inspection for radiation leak, let's say, I would imagine that that might be something that another company may be willing to do, but the feedback we got was they really liked to steer away from equipment that's not theirs.
We bid that out, Rory. Was there more than one?
I believe there was. I believe. I know I had a post-it note in here. I had a lot of post-it notes. Sorry. One second, I know what's in here. L three Communications was the other company, I believe they had bid on it the last go-around, and, and that is also the company that we had reached out to, and their response was rapid scan is proprietary, so they will not do service agreement on that machine.
But I would think there'd be more in the market out there, these machines.
I would agree with you. I'm sure there are several brands. I will say that rapid scan is a, a fairly common system. I know a lot of airports use rapid scan. I know when we originally brought this in front of the board, the feedback that we received was, was well, was good, and honestly, we haven't had many issues with the machine. In the five years, we had a UPS failure, and we had a, I would call it more of an operator error, where the password actually had gotten messed with.
Did you have trouble one time getting, getting those people here, because we were kind of low on the totem pole compared to airport security?
What happened at that particular time, we were in between a contract, because it was, was trying to be decided whether or not we're going to do a service, and we got a pretty good example of what type of service we would get if we did not have a service agreement, because yes, it, it was very difficult to get them here. And that's when I received a phone call from the technician, and they literally walked me through the problems, so.
And the ball's definitely in their court.
Yeah.
When do you have this one scheduled for replacement?
I don't. For the machine, no, I don't. And that's, I think, what Tom alluded to, is what is the life, you know, as long as you do preventative maintenance, I don't have an answer to that question, and how long we should expect this thing to last. I, I think the real question is, you know, for a twenty-seven thousand dollar piece of equipment, does it make sense to keep putting, you know, forty-five, forty-six hundred dollars into it every year? It's, it's one of these situations where if this machine were to go down, our backup plan would be the security guards using their wands to go over packages, articles of, you know, briefcases, those types of things. That would be our contingency plan if we were to lose this system.
I, you know, personally, I don't like that we have to pay this, but with what you've been telling about the prior, that preparity on these, this machine, I don't know what we'd do if we didn't have this contract. I think it would, it would be difficult to provide the service that we provide if we had to go to hand scanning. It would certainly cause a long line out the door.
To continue the level of, I guess, security that we do, yes.
Well, we don't have a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to approve the service contract with Rapsicon for four thousand, six hundred and twenty dollars for the year stated.
One second.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any other discussion? Hearing none. This is be a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Layland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Eggsman.
Yes. Now have the public hearing. It is now nine twenty-eight. It's a hearing on proposed ordinance number seven, seven, dash, one, nine, five, shares rezoning.
Motion received and placed on file, proof of public patience.
Second.
Have a motion to receive and place on file. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed?
Motion to waive the first reading.
Second.
Motion to waive the first reading. Any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion to close the hearing after oral written comments are received and placed on file.
Second.
Mr. Veder, do we have any written comments?
No, sir.
Seth, you want to give us an overview?
Absolutely. Yeah, the Planning and Zoning Commission at its regular meeting on October seventeenth, two thousand seventeen, reviewed the request, rezone one point five acres from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district to allow for the construction of a single-family home. And this, this home is just east of seven, four, two, five Pointer Road. The request to rezone one point five acres from a agricultural district to agricultural, to AR agricultural residential district in order to build a new same, single-family home. It was moved by Wertz and segmented by Nagel to approve the request to rezone one point five acres from a agricultural district to AR agricultural residential district in order to build a single-family home. Motion to approve carried unanimously, five to, five to zero. The applicant wishes to rezone one point five acres from A to AR in order to build one single-family home on the property. Approximately one-third of the proposed rezoned area contains agricultural buildings and has not been farmed for many years. The remaining two-thirds of the proposed rezoned area is currently utilized for farm production. The site also meets the lot in size requirements for the agricultural residential district by being greater than one point five acres and wider than a hundred and fifty feet. The home, when construction, will meet all setback requirements for the AR agricultural residential district. residential district. The surrounding land uses are a agricultural district to the north, south, east, and west. The Blackhawk County future land use map adopted as a component of the Blackhawk County Comprehensive Plan designates this property as agricultural. Land of the north, south, east, and west is listed as agricultural as well. The property question is not located in the flood hazard area, as designated by the Federal Emergency Management Agency. The property main parcel has a lease score of 244 out of 300, which is considered high agricultural value. The zoning ordinance states that is classified as having high agricultural value is strongly discouraged for development in almost every case. Also states that in general, these sites are reserved for agricultural activities and protected from urban development or urban use encroachment. However, the ordinance also states that only under very unique circumstances are these sites to be developed, and only after compelling evidence is provided. The Planning and Zoning Commission indicated the site is unique because it currently has buildings, water, and electricity. In addition, a third of the rezone area has not been farmed in 30 years, and very little land will be taken out of farm production. All these factors provide for unique and compelling evidence. Therefore, I would ask, okay, and that's it.
What was the vote again?
Oh, it was 5-0. It was unanimous to approve the rezone.
5-0 to approve.
It's surprising you got that.
Yeah.
It doesn't happen too often.
Not too often on a rezone.
Is there any other questions from the board? Is there anyone in the audience that would like to address this issue?
Good morning. Kyle Helen, Helen Engineering, representing the applicant. The applicants are here, the shares. Just wanted to address, in case you have any technical questions, I can try and answer those. But this is a family farm, and they're basically just wanting to build on it and leave as small a footprint as possible. What they don't utilize for residence and for the septic system will continue to be farmed, but I guess maybe they can address that if they have, if they'd like to speak. But if you have any other questions for me, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Would you like to address the board on this issue?
No.
Okay. Wanted to give you the opportunity. There's no other discussion. We have a motion to close the hearing. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carried.
Motion, resolution to suspend the rules, motion.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to suspend the rules, requiring this to be read at two prior meetings. This is the resolution. Please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz.
Yes.
White.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Axeman.
Yes. The ordinance adopting the ordinance, amending ordinance number 36 as amended, Blackhawk County, Iowa, agricultural preservation zoning ordinance adopted February 2, 1999, by adding section number 195 to section six, rezoning certain properties as described in the above request submitted by Ryan and Rachel Shares. Is there any other discussion on this? The resolution, please answer as your name is called.
White.
Yes.
Leyland.
Yes.
Little.
Yes.
Schwartz.
Yes.
Axeman.
Yes. Resolution has been adopted. Thank you. Item C is a discussion on fiscal 19, fiscal year 19 budget process and objectives.
So as we begin the FY19 budget, I just wanted to briefly go over the process, see if the board has any questions or would like to make any changes. Basically, the FY19 budget is open in New World, our financial software. The departments are entering their operating expenses. They're entering their budget requests into New World. They can put in comments, transactions, specific details, online items. Kim has set up a shared folder called Board Budget that you all have access to and all the departments have access to, with a few exceptions, and each department has a folder within there. Once the budget has been entered, we will be running detailed reports that will be saved out there under each department for the board to review. And documents such as contracts, operating leases, and, you know, other supporting documentation will also be scanned and saved out there. So we'll try and have all the budget information out in that folder for anybody to review out there. And then basically, they are working on entering their operating expenses. We're gonna try and have those all input by December 8, and I will go through and review all of those line items that they have entered. And then the salary and benefit projections, we're working on. In the past, we have started with a 3% on the non-bargaining increases in department heads. Is there, do you wanna remain at the 3% just for a starting point, or is there...
What's the union contracts?
The union contracts, I'd have to look at them. I mean, they'll be whatever the contract is for FY19. I'm not sure if it's 2 and 3/4 or 3. Do you know, Debbie? Okay. But whatever that figure is, is what we put in for the union contracts. But for the non-bargaining and department heads, in the past couple of years, we've used 3% as a starting point, but if there's a different figure that you would like to...
I guess I'd be comfortable leaving it at 3%, we can make adjustments.
Okay. And then on our benefit projections, as you know, the past couple of years, we've had to increase, the last two fiscal years, 20% each year, trying to stabilize our health insurance trust fund. And we had asked Perspective to give us a very preliminary increase for FY19. They came back, it looks much better. Now, this is very preliminary. They only had three months of this fiscal year data to work with, but right now, they're projecting a 6.1% increase on the medical and 3.5% increase on the dental. So that's good news. And I will ask them to update that later in December with two additional months. They'll have October and November. And then whatever they come up with is probably what we'll use to start with on the benefit increase, unless you have any changes on that. On capital, right now, the departments are, we had a form I created last year, and they're using that to develop a list of their capital items. Anything over $1,000 is what our policy considers a capital request that goes into the capital line items. So they will give a detailed list of that, and as we did last year, I'll combine all of those, and we can look at those during one budget work session. Backing up to salary, one other thing I wanted to bring up. Last year, we did an equity adjustment on non-bargaining. Audra and Debbie had worked on this last year, and I believe it was everyone who had been in their position, I think for three years, was expected to be at midpoint, and we had a schedule, and we did several equity adjustments. I believe the intent when doing, when we did that last year was to continue to look at that each year. And so I think that's one question. Does the board, you know, wish to continue that? We will create that and take a look at what that adjustment would be for FY19.
I would certainly like to.
I think looking at it, but answer a lot of your questions determines on the overall situation when we actually get into budget. I don't know if we're gonna have a 20% increase in taxes or 2%, so, you know, to answer some of these questions, we gotta have a bigger picture on where the county is sitting, and obviously, we know there's some concerns in different areas.
Right. But I think the question is, I mean, it takes some work to go through and create the spreadsheet, and we just wanted to make sure that we should continue working on that, to take a look at that.
And we take care of, I think there was 17 on a sheet, or...
I don't remember, Debbie.
And then, I think there was a list that we took care of, and then there was individuals after the fact.
There was two. We're very close that we'd be up this year.
So when the board gets the department's budgets, it's just kind of a free-wheeling? I mean, are we gonna know what their budget increased from last year? Because usually, we set, you know, like a 5% or 3%. You're saying they're just gonna fill their budgets out?
Well, they're going to enter their budget requests for FY19. So I mean, it's just a request. And what I've asked them to do is to base their operating expenses on a trend of the previous, you know, three-year actual history. So, and there will be fluctuations. So I know, for example, last year, take HR, for example, they requested some additional training. So they had a large increase in their training line item because they were gonna send Mary Ann to some specific training. So I would anticipate, unless they're doing something different, that that would then go down, or their training budget might change. So instead of telling every department to say, you know, limit it to a certain percent increase, I would rather they project what their estimated, you know, actual, because some departments might have increases, some departments might have decreases, and then we can look at that in total and by department, you know, based on their request. But unless the board would like, you know, a different approach, that's...
And we'll always have the previous years, I was gonna say, as comparisons, too.
Right, yeah.
So what we'll look at, the budget worksheets, once they enter their requests, and these
will be out there for the board to review, it'll show three years of actual history, and then what we budgeted for current FY18, and then what they have requested for FY19.
So you can tell what their budgets went up from FY...
So then, yeah, and then there'll be a column that'll have an increase, so you can see what the increase is.
From 17 to 18. You'll be able to show that to us.
You can, you will be able to see an actual increase from like, because FY17 will be actual, and FY19 will be requested. And then also, a budget increase from FY18, what they've currently budgeted for this year, and FY19.
Will that show revenues, too?
Yes.
Did any of our departments miss their revenue at the end of the fiscal year of 17?
Yes.
We did have some that...
Yes, in that financial report that I did for FY17, it showed by department on the revenues. We can, I can go back and take a look.
We wanna refresh ourselves on that, too, so we...
Right.
Maybe we have to adjust. Normally, we don't adjust revenues, but maybe we need to start looking at that a little closer.
Yes, yeah.
I think in the past several years, we started out with the zero, and then we, that didn't include wages or contracts, and then if there was exceptions to that, they had to give justifications for it.
The, as Frank indicated, the contracts weren't in there, wages weren't in there, and a lot of our departments have automatic contract renewal service agreements, like Rory, they were out of there, because we do know that's constant, those areas there. So we started zero their budget, but I don't think we did last year.
We didn't, no.
Their budgets, basically what they submitted was pretty much passed that way, too.
Well, when the departments come for their work sessions, and we can sit down and go through the line items, if there are, they're going to enter in, and that's why they're gonna scan their contracts and agreements, and they'll have them out there, so I'll be able to review those to make sure that the amounts that are entered in there. They'll also enter in detailed transactions, so, for example, Rory's budget under professional services, which is where he has all of his, you know, maintenance contracts, it'll have a detail, and you can look at that on the budget worksheet, so you can see if it's a total of $300,000, what makes up that number.
But I think what Frank is saying is their budget should be submitted to us at zero, which would be FY18, FY18, minus wages, minus service contracts, then when they come to the board for the first time, they present the case for how different areas that go up. That way, the board knows where they're starting from.
Well, we can put in, I mean, I can set up the budget so that it just takes FY18 numbers and dumps them into FY19, but I'm not sure, I guess, you know, even if I'm looking at the board office budget, there are oftentimes departments that want, based on what their actuals were, maybe in FY17 and FY16, where they want to increase training, but decrease something else, maybe that they didn't, you know...
Well, that's when they make their case to the board, then.
Okay.
That's where the adjustment comes from.
But you don't want them to enter that into the financial system to start with?
No, we will as we go on, after we go through each department. That's the way we used to do it.
Okay. If we wait till January to enter it all, all the different amounts into the financial system, it's gonna be quite a time crunch to get everything in.
I think we entered it as we went with each individual department, the first go around.
Okay. But typically, we don't start meeting with departments until January.
Sure.
And so, you know, if we don't have a, if the health department, if we don't sit down and meet with them until the end of January, if their budget work session isn't until the end of January, they've got a lot of line items to try and go through, and they are one department that, you know, depending on programs they have, makes a lot of changes. If we don't have anything entered into New World to start with...
Traditionally, a department like Health Department will show us a budget, the way we used to do it, and it'd be a constant budget, same as it was the fiscal year. Then they'd show increases in different areas for whatever reason, training, new job position, things like that, and we would add them as we went along. Last year, we didn't do that, and I had no idea where the budget started at and where it finished. I don't think it, where it started at, I think it finished there, because we didn't cut anything last year.
Well, when we looked at the budgets last year, we had that information. So we had the previous year's budget, we had the previous year's actual figures, we had the increases from the previous budget to the, you know, FY18 budget. We had the differences between the actual and the FY18. Sometimes we looked at it in summary, and I'm happy to go through it in line item detail.
Susan, to submit their budget, you can identify if it's over last year's budget, correct?
Sure, yeah.
If you could spell that out, if that would be the way that we could track that...
Yes, I would definitely indicate those areas that they were increasing.
And highlight those line items that...
Yes, yeah.
That are not consistent with last year's budget.
Sure, yes, we can do that, definitely.
And that would show us which line items are not the same as this fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
Why don't you try that?
Okay.
And again, the compensation committee won't meet till December, so it's even kinda hard to talk salaries, but we gotta include the two together with non-bargaining. So I think we're gonna have to wait until we see when we get there. They meet what, second week in December?
I'm not sure when it's scheduled, but...
Susan, we've done our work sessions on Mondays and Thursdays. Do you see that scheduled continuing, or...
I think we did them on Tuesdays after the...
Tuesday.
Yeah, and Thursdays. Yes, and that would be fine. I guess I would kind of like to, I don't know if we need to add a day, but to try and get, you know, through all the departments, and I would like to be able to schedule their times. I know last year, unless you prefer to have several departments here, ready to go, and then, you know, go through, otherwise, I don't know, to me, it seems to work better for the departments if they have a scheduled time that they know they're going to come and go over their budget.
It's just, there's quite a few that we can knock out five or six in one session, the civil service, medical examiner, and so forth.
Right, right, yeah.
And get those out of the way, then we can start working on the other ones. And get those out of the way, then we can start working on the other ones. The recorder's office is usually pretty, and the treasurer's office is too, so...
If you wanna set up a schedule, do so and telling them there could be adjustments needed.
I think the schedule helps too. There's some that like their board's participation, so that gives people some advance notice and an opportunity too, so.
Okay.
Prefer a schedule. We've had board members from the health department and VA, VA, veterans, health, conservation, they've all come previous years. Wolf Creek Bridge.
The nature trail, I think we had.
I didn't know that was a department by itself.
I didn't either.
I think it showed up in a budget, I think it showed up in a budget, did it not?
Yes, it did.
Several people, yeah.
Okay.
So...
Anything else, Susan?
Yes, I have a few other things.
January's gonna be pretty well filled up with trying to get through the budget sessions and those will all be public sessions.
So we have started working on updating our three-to-five-year strategic plan. But it's now with the timeframe, it's looking like we probably won't have that accomplished by the end of this year. I didn't know with the board, though, if you wanted to have a work session in December, if there were specific objectives or budget initiatives that you would like to discuss, that you would like to see put into the budget? Or if there was information that you wanted from the departments as far as their departmental goals for FY nineteen, when you're looking at their budgets?
I think we'll have an opportunity with our department heads and directors to get an update on that. We may wanna schedule in our elected officials if they wanna give a work session on, if they feel like they need one.
Do you want that with their budget work session? I mean, just at the same time or...
Hard to get them on multiple occasions.
Yeah.
So you might as well put it in one and be done with it.
And I think it's good information for the public then to hear also what their goals are for their department, so.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Are there any overall initiatives or objectives that you would like to be looking at for FY nineteen? Or do you want to have a work session on that? Or a future just discussion on it or...
Well, I think, you know, we have a known on it, but Country View is certainly gonna be a, you know, an issue, you know, in taxing for that in this fiscal year. We'll no longer be able to use reserves for that, so we'll be looking at taxing that.
Right.
I think it may be a good idea to have a work session with Country View so that we understand what their golden objectives are for the upcoming year and how costs are gonna be contained.
Okay. So on the capital, I'd kinda like to discuss this, a change in approach to our capital improvement budgeting. So in the past, we have, when we haven't bonded for capital projects, we've included them with the departmental budgets. So mainly in maintenance or conservation or some of the, there's a couple of other departments that have the larger capital projects. Several other counties approach this differently. They use their capital projects fund and they transfer, they set sort of an annual transfer amount from the general fund into the capital projects fund. And they have built up reserves for their capital projects with the intent that, to sort of move towards a pay-as-you-go policy so that, for instance, we had the jail security project was a large, you know, project, we had to add a million dollars last year. But if we could have budgeted and sort of built up reserves in a capital projects fund for some of these large items, then, you know, possibly we would, if we develop our five-year capital plan and look out to see what we're going to be needing in the next five years and plan accordingly, transfer an appropriate amount into the capital projects fund so that we sort of have a more level amount that gets budgeted for capital projects every year. We could avoid tax fluctuations that way. And then have some reserves in our capital projects fund to use for these large items. That might help in the future when we, if we do have a situation where there's an overage, if we have a shortage, those funds would remain in the capital projects fund to be used on future capital projects. It would sort of, kind of help that, balance that out. And then it would be easier to track and, and, and I think manage those projects, especially because, you know, they fluctuate from year to year or the projects that cross over year to year. If you were, you know, just having an annual transfer from your general fund to your capital projects fund and paying things out of the capital projects fund.
How would you fund that?
With a transfer from the general fund. You would levy an amount to transfer into your capital projects fund. So instead of putting those capital items in under the maintenance department and budgeting for, you know, whatever those items are in the current year.
So you would tax for that amount is what you're saying? And put it in the general fund? When you say levy?
Right, you would tax for it, just like you would if you had it in the general fund. You're just, you know what I mean? Just with our, with developing a five-year capital plan, you could sort of, you know, approach that. So say in three years, you wanted to do a new phone system and you knew it was gonna be five hundred thousand. Instead of having that bump in that one year, you could plan for that. And so you would be, you know, saving up in your capital projects fund to cover that.
Somewhat done that with IT, we put fund in there. I guess, would you look at then reducing the amount of bonding that we do?
In the future, if we could get to a point where we were developing our five-year plan and budgeting enough, you know, if we could, you know, afford to do that within our budget, then yes, we would be trying to pay for those projects, you know, rather than, you know, bond for them in the future.
It would still show up in our overall reserves or, as far as the county's reserves that we'd have, that fund would still be included in our bottom line of...
It'd just have the reserve.
Yes, it would be restricted though.
Yes.
It would be restricted for capital projects. It wouldn't be part of the unassigned general fund. It would be in a restricted fund.
You know, I think it's a good idea, but do you think in the upcoming climate we got coming that we're able to do that? I mean, with Country View looming out there and the commercial tax and some other things, it might be pretty hard to fund that without raising taxes considerably.
Well, this year actually might be an ideal year to start because we bonded for several large projects in FY seventeen. And talking with Rory, you know, we aren't looking at a lot of major projects, I don't think, in FY nineteen. So we could start by, you know, budgeting, I don't know what the amount would be yet, but, and start building up a little bit of reserves in there. And then we're gonna work on updating our five-year plan, the draft that we had. And I'll be able to, you know, kind of forecast out what I think we would need. We can take a look at that.
I think it'd be worth taking a look at and presenting it to us.
Okay.
We've gotta see the whole picture first to see if we're even able to even have that discussion.
I think avoiding tax fluctuations, like you said, though, that's a real advantage for us to not have the peaks and valleys and have more consistent...
They've been holding pretty steady over the years.
We've been doing good the last few years, yeah.
Yeah. This one I'm not so sure about.
Any other questions for Susan? Thank you. We'll move into item ten is the canvas.
Thank you.
For the cities of Dunkerton, Evansdale, Alcrone, Heights, Gilbertville, Hudson, La Port City and Raymond. Nobody's interested in this canvas?
No.
I'm staying.
Old news. Okay. You wanna do them again?
Yeah, you got time, yeah. Go ahead and record it. It'll get two hours of, this'll only take a few minutes, Chuck.
Okay, first one.
I'll get it. It's not convenient.
Yep.
We're looking for Foss sixty-one twenty-five.
Correct.
Seventy to forty.
Seventy-seven.
And sixty-eight, sixty-two and one.
Correct.
This was word one.
Yep.
And twenty-five right in, my word.
Is she good?
I got any of them.
I haven't asked her for anything yet.
That's a lot, one word. Twenty-five, word one, my word.
I thought, oh, she's thinking, just send me out.
Setting the foundation, buddy.
First number is forty-eight.
Okay, looks like we're two.
Nine, forty-eight, forty-six, one.
Oh, they counted a lot of write-ins.
There was. A write-in, you don't like the choice, I guess, right?
I'm talking about for mayor.
Yeah, that one, yeah, I remember.
Looking for Foss sixty-six. That's fifty percent write-ins.
I've entered in there, it starts, looks like six. One, zero.
I got it.
Okay, seventy-six, seven. Forty-seven, fifty-two, zero.
How many write-ins?
And sixty-nine, sixty-nine, seven.
Five, six, four, three.
That was for a park board, Travis Nichols, sixty-nine, sixty-nine, one.
Zero, two, zero, one, zero. Six, eight, one. One, zero.
Again. Nichols.
We got Nichols, sixty-nine, sixty-nine, seven.
Okay. I got five.
One, zero.
Five write-ins and two, seven, okay, seven total.
Seven write-ins.
They had, they had broken out.
Oh, okay. That was park board.
Zero, zero, zero.
Okay, we got three.
That's in public measure.
Okay, we got...
Okay, we're looking for Foss with fifty-seven, twenty.
Right.
Sixty-two, seven.
Right.
And Nichols, fifty, fifty-seven, ten.
Okay.
Correct.
Word four. What are you in, Greg, two or three?
So there are write-ins from multiple people. Okay.
Hey, Roy, good job, Roy. Good morning, Jeff, how are you? Go ahead, thank you.
Okay, we got Foss at eighty-one. Twenty-five.
Yes.
And then we got eighty-three, thirteen.
Correct.
And we got ninety-one, three. And then we got Nichols at sixty-eight, seventy-eight, three.
Ready, keep these off the floor.
All right.
Keep them off the floor. He said if we dropped one...
Yeah.
So there's a lot of issues with that, whether you're doing it right. Yeah, so it's just kind of a work...
How's she doing? I saw a picture of the baby, it is our cutie. What's the name of it?
Lawson.
Lawson, L-A-W-I-S-E-N-Y.
I like that one, yeah.
Is that a family name? It's a very unusual name.
Yeah.
I like it, it is a very unusual name.
Actually, it's sooner than I thought it'd be.
With the baby, I hope.
Right.
Yes, I should see.
Chuck, don't leave us, Danny.
We have an insurance meeting after, right?
Unfortunately, yeah.
How are you, Charlie?
Not done, Chuck. They're quicky today.
No, we're not quite done. Mr. Chair, there was one provision about we just did not have.
Okay.
But I didn't spell a little right.
How's Pete?
Good, how are you doing today, Craig?
Pete must be working overtime today.
I'm watching him, yeah.
Yeah, one fellow on the floor last time. See, we got more than we have for Waterloo.
Yeah.
Cedar Falls.
You can't read them, oh, God.
It's real, Danin.
Again, again.
Now you're off till next November.
Yeah.
Yeah. All that.
Maybe not for you.
Only one, is it at large or... You'll have a little turn up.
Okay.
Who? Oh, you beat the other one's chairs. Both been in there forever, back and forth. Is there a resolution?
Yes, resolutions certify the outcome of the votes cast and the city elections held Tuesday, November seventh, two thousand seventeen for the cities of Dunkerton, Evansdale, Alcrone, Heights, Gilbertville, Hudson, La Porte City and Raymond in accordance with the Code of Iowa fifty point two-four. Any questions, discussion, this is a resolution, please answer as your name is called.
Schwartz?
Yes.
White?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Little?
Yes.
Maxman?
Yes.
Any reports, information from the board?
I just wanted to know if this is two weeks from our last work session on Country View and Dennis hasn't been here to talk to us at either one of these meetings since then, despite being asked. It's disappointing.
I'll call in. We are going down to Sunny Crest.
Thursday.
Thursday. Susan and Dennis and Genevieve, Mr. White, myself will be going down.
I'll be visiting there next Wednesday.
Where are you backing us up in there?
We should've probably gotten a bus and all that.
I'm going home for Thanksgiving anyways.
Anything else? Otherwise, entertaining motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor signify to say an aye.
Aye.
Suppose we're adjourned, thank you.
Thanks, Joe.